Called to order the regular Ellsworth City Council meeting July 20, 2020. And so first, just want to read that in accordance with an act to implement provisions necessary to help welfare and safety of the citizens of Maine in response to the COVID-19 public health emergency, as enacted to read section G-11 MRSA, section 403-A, public proceedings for remote access during declaration of state of emergency due to COVID-19. The meeting will be held live at One City Hall Plaza in the City Hall Council chambers, with only the allowable number of participants according to the governor's executive orders. Citizens may email questions and public comments on the public hearing agenda items, as well as other items this evening, to chair Dale Hamilton at DHamilton@EllsworthMaine.gov prior to and throughout the duration of the meeting. The meeting will be broadcast live on the city of Ellsworth, Maine Facebook page and YouTube page, as well as recorded and made available live on Spectrum Channel 1303. Second item, pledge of allegiance.
Pledge of allegiance to the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So I'll just reiterate that any, if you want to make a public comment, that item is coming up on item seven, but feel free to send that in now to the DHamilton@EllsworthMaine.gov. That's the only site that will be monitored, so please send it there, and that way it will be to us in time to be read during the, during that section of the agenda. Item number three, rules of order. We follow Roberts' rules of order and any other rules that are determined during the planning meeting. Item number four, adoption of minutes from the following meetings of the Ellsworth City Council, 615-2020 regular council meeting.
Move approval, Mr. Chair.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor? Unanimous. Item number five, city manager's report. Manager Cole.
Since our last meeting, the city was successful in, in winning a grant of $25,372 out of the Keep Maine Healthy program. Development Services Director Jana Richards will be speaking to this later on the agenda, but it provides resources not only for PPE and other safety measures, but also funding to work with our business community and our partners to promote the area and promote a message of civility and safety, and commend Director Richards in her efforts. Do also want to mention that there will be a meeting of the Public Safety Planning Committee this Friday, which will be, excuse me, Thursday at 6:00 PM, which will be aired on Facebook and YouTube. And lastly, there will be a webinar tomorrow, the 21st, where, sponsored by Frenchman's Bay Conservancy, where Aaron Doherty, the director, will be joined by Ellsworth Economic Development Director Jana Richards to talk about our joint conservation efforts at Branch Lake, the Union River, and, and other such efforts. And if you're interested, tune in to that Zoom conference. The details will be on our website. That's all I had tonight, Mr. Chair.
Any questions, comments? All right. Item number six, committee reports. Any councilors attend any committee with permission? Council Phillips.
Chair, I went to the outer commission meeting, pretty uneventful. Things are going well. Fuel sales picked up a little bit. I wouldn't call it substantial, but it's 200 or 300 gallons more than they were last season at that point. The two, I guess, I don't know what we call them, part-time harbor master, they seem to be working out well. Pumps are in, things look good.
Council Miller.
I went to the Historic Preservation Commission meeting. They were, they talked about how the old jail is in poor condition, and they are putting up a screen on one of the walls to catch falling debris, so it doesn't damage cars or people. It's in pretty bad condition, and they were talking about ways that they might be able to restore the building. They're in the brainstorming phase right now, but that wall had a structural engineer look at it, and it, it could completely collapse within the next three years, the one facing the parking lot. The committee also voted to nominate Tom Clark for a position on the Historic Commission. Tom owns a historic building in Ellsworth and is really interested in joining the commission, so would ask that we would place this on the August agenda for the council's approval.
Other committee reports. Council Blanche.
It's not a, exactly a committee. It's a, was an activity that, on behalf of the city. The city has hired a preeminent cemetery restorer to help us do some work at the city-owned cemetery, the old burying ground behind the congregational church. And we spent, he, myself, and three other volunteers spent the day in there, as I tell people, with a shovel digging. We, we found several stones that were broken, several bases for those stones that were also broken. We've raised several of them. Several of them we've already repaired, and they're now standing as they should, straight and tall. Work will continue all day tomorrow and probably go well into Wednesday.
Other reports? All right. Moving on to item seven, this is citizens' comments, so if you do have a comment you would like read, please send that in to DHamilton@EllsworthMaine.gov. I do have one comment from John Stein, owner, manager of Fogtown Brewing Company, to the council. Would the council please describe the ways in which it has spent funds allocated to COVID emergency management thus far, what the council thinks still needs to be addressed in terms of public safety, and what they've heard from citizens, businesses, and visitors about their current COVID plan and actions taken? Thank you for your consideration, John Stein. So in terms of responding, I think, Manager Cole, if you want to address, you mentioned some of it, I can certainly round it off as well.
Certainly. The city has purchased through the $20,000 that the council allocated to economic recovery, funding for hand sanitizer by the gallon. That's been provided, about 30 gallons, to local businesses. We also worked through a working group with other businesses and organizations on a common signage theme for the community whereby local businesses and organizations would have a ready-to-go posting to encourage wearing of masks, social distancing, and other safety protocols. And Development Director Richards, later on in the agenda, is going to be discussing the allocation of funds through the Healthy, Keep Maine Healthy grant of $25,372, as well as other complementary uses, which would go into promoting safety and civility in the community, and basically thanking the community for stepping up and working as a team. Fact is that you're talking about bending the curve, and this community and county's done that, and people deserve to be thanked and encouraged to keep it up. So that's the long and the short of it, Mr. Chair, and it will be discussed later on in the agenda as well.
Yeah, so, and I would just add that I've been a regular participant representing the council on numerous calls with businesses and Chamber of Commerce to ask businesses what is their most pressing need as they are trying to respond appropriately to the executive orders. And the city has certainly been more than willing and consistent in, in making sure that the businesses know that if they need something to reach out, Jana's been the point person on that, so that as needs are identified, those funds could be used appropriately. So that's, that's been a constant theme. There have been numerous comments in terms of, there have been some concerns expressed in terms of, of masking, others expressing the opposite, and I think that's consistent with what, what you hear throughout the country. I think the important piece to remember is that regardless of your view of whether you should wear a mask, shouldn't wear a mask, my right to, my right not to, all of those dynamics, the, the reality for our businesses is that they are under mandate by executive orders to follow certain protocols, and the best thing that we can do to support our local businesses is just to, to follow whatever parameters are set in place by those businesses. They want to keep people safe, they want to comply with the orders, most importantly, they want to operate their businesses. And the more we can do to support them, the better it is for those businesses, our community, and that's really our focus in terms of the messaging and reminding our visitors. I think in large part, we've seen a huge shift from when this first started to where we are today. If you go into any, any business, large or small, I think there's far greater compliance. And as Manager Cole said, if you look at the, the statistics and the, and the data, Hancock County has fared well, which obviously includes Ellsworth, and we have some large businesses, and, and so it, I think that speaks to the fact that people are adhering to it. Nothing is 100% or perfect, but I think people have the best interest in mind, and that's really what the city's been really supporting, is, is just trying to provide whatever PPE, that was the first thing, the most difficult thing for businesses to get, and being able to get hand sanitizer and to support that. There is a cost for masks, being able to do that, purchasing, and we'll get into more detail, as Manager Cole said, so we'll leave some of that for later on. But that's, that's in essence what's, what has been going on, that it's been a lot of activity, and I really want to commend the, the city staff. They really have been available to any business to, to be responsive and have been working intensely with, with the chamber and the heart of Ellsworth to really promote safety and, and keep the public safe, keep the visitors safe, while also supporting our businesses.
Mr. Chair, just one other note. Under the governor's latest executive order mandating the wearing of masks, the city does have a role to play, but its layout by the state is primarily educational. But the state has contacted us where they've gotten complaints, we have approached businesses, and again, in the spirit of trying to correct the situation, educate the people involved. That's largely the approach to it, and, and that will be happening on an ongoing basis. But again, later in the agenda, lay out a very proactive scheme for working with our partners.
So that's the only comment so far. What I would say is, if you, given the circumstances, if a comment comes in, I will read the comments throughout the meeting, in fairness. If you send in a comment, and I do not read it, you do not hear it read, please assume that for some reason it did not make it. We've had that situation happen where someone sent an email and, and it didn't come through for whatever reason. Please resend it so that I can make sure that, that it's read during this meeting. I will read all the emails that are presented to us. Please include your name and your address, much like you would if you were making a public comment here in the, in the chambers. So with that said, we can move on to presentation of awards. This evening, we're recognizing Charlene Clemens, and again, we will certainly try to present all of these again in person when we're able and keep track of them, but we do want to recognize for current five years of service to the Ellsworth Public Library and your over 25 years of collective service, your devotion to duty and loyalty to the community have contributed to the improvement in the city of Ellsworth, presented this 20th day of July 2020. So unfinished business, consent agenda, consent agenda. All items with an asterisk are considered to be routine and will be enacted in one motion. There will be no separate discussion of these items unless a council member so requests, in which event the item will be removed from the consent agenda and considered in its normal sequence on the agenda. Number nine, council order number 072000, request of the city assessor for abatement of FY 2019 and FY 2018 taxes incorrectly billed to Bonnie Walker, munis ID number 6883, in the amount of $988.61 plus interest and fees, FY 2019, and $973.97 plus interest and fees for FY 2018. Item 10, council order number 072001, request of the Ellsworth Planning Board to accept a resignation letter from Roger P. Lazard, with a term to expire on June 30, 2022. And item 11, council order number 072002, request of the city clerk for review and acceptance of the results from the July 14, 2020, City of Ellsworth School Budget Validation Special Municipal Referendum Election. Do any councilors want to remove any items from the consent agenda? Seeing none, is there a motion?
Mr. Chairman, move.
Acceptance of the consent agenda.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor? New business, item 12, public hearing in action on the following business license applications. As these are public hearings, when I open the public hearing, the public again has the opportunity to weigh in through, through email, so again, my email address is DHamilton@EllsworthMaine.gov. If there's an item under number 12 that you would like to comment on, please send it in now. You do not have to wait until that public hearing is open, and I will read it during the appropriate public hearing. So we will start with Ellsworth Lodge of Elks, number 2743317 High Street, for renewal of a city Class B license, victular alcohol and amusement, and renewal of a state club on premise with catering malt, spiritus, and vinus Class 1 liquor license. Any comments by councilors? Council Captain.
In the application, it says that the reason for the request is an outside street dance. What street would this be on, and how many people would be in attendance?
I'm not sure they have actually planned yet or not. It's just generally they have one, I think, it's right in their street of prior, I can chart it.
Okay. And when is it? I might want to go.
All right, this is a public hearing. I'll open the public hearing, and I will give it a mo, give it a moment for the public if you would like to comment on this item. And while we're waiting, I'll open it up for any, councilors, for any further discussion. Okay, let's just give it a minute then. Seeing no comments, we'll close the public hearing.
Mr. Chairman, move approval of the Ellsworth Lodge of Elks for renewal of their license.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All in favor? Unanimous. Fogtown Brewing Company, LLC, DBA Fogtown Brewing Company, 25 Pine Street, for renewal of a city Class B license, victular alcohol and amusement. Any comments?
Was the noise problem addressed with them already? I know at the last meeting, and I was also, I received a few anonymous messages over the last week about, that the noise was not fixed yet.
Manager Cole, do you have any insight in terms of any?
I, I'm not aware of any recent issues, but there may be. I could consult with the chief, but it hasn't said anything. But if I remember correctly, I don't know that the noise situation is relevant to the granting of the license. I could be wrong on that, but I, I don't know if Clerk Grindel has any recollection on that.
No, my understanding, they have been operating in some capacity, so they're waiting until things are lifted, and then John will come back and give an update, so we can invite him to the next meeting.
To address the concerns.
Council Captain.
Do you have the actual application with it?
The state one, they have applied for a different state license, it doesn't require our signatures any longer. It's like a town and something license.
Tasting room?
Yeah, tasting, so we only have the city one now by chart, by ordinance.
Okay.
So this is a public hearing, I'll open the public hearing, and if there, I haven't seen any comments come in yet, just give it another minute. All right, seeing no comments, I will close the public hearing. Any further discussion? Or a motion?
Chairman, move approval of the Fogtown Brewing, request for renewal of license.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All in favor? Jennifer Wing, DBA Peppers Pub Incorporated, 20 Water Street, for renewal of a city Class B license, victular alcohol and amusement, and renewal of a state restaurant, lounge, malt, spiritus, and vinus Class 11 liquor license. It's a public hearing, I'll open the public hearing. Seeing no comments, I will close the public hearing.
Mr. Chairman, move approval of the request that Peppers Pub for renewal of their license.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All in favor? All opposed? Council Captain, did you, did you go in favor?
Yes.
Okay, I didn't see any. I didn't turn fast enough, thank you. It's unanimous. And just going back, John Stein sent a comment, said that he was happy to address any concerns that the public has about these anonymous noise complaints, have not heard anything about it at this point, so.
Thank you.
Taste Jamaica LLC, 190 State Street, for renewal of a city Class C license, victular and liquor, and renewal of a state restaurant Class 3 and 4 wine and malt liquor license. It's a public hearing, I'll open the public hearing. Wait to see if there's any comments. While we're doing that, ask if there's any, any, councilors have any comments? Not seeing any comments coming through. I'll close the public hearing.
Mr. Chairman, move approval of the request from Taste Jamaica for renewal of their licenses.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor? Unanimous. And Rockbound Management LLC, DBA Twin Hills Cottages of Acadia, 210 Twin Hill Road, for renewal of a city lodging license. It's a public hearing, I'll open the public hearing. Give a moment for any comments. Not seeing any comments coming through, I'll close the public hearing.
Mr. Chairman, move to approve the licensing of the Rockbound Twin Hills Cottages of Acadia.
It's a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor? Unanimous. Item 13, council order number 072003, request of the fire chief to accept a revised agreement with the county of Hancock for providing Fletcher's Landing Township Fire Protection and Emergency Services.
Chief Regio Tepa, I provided you with two different agreements. One is just simply changing the dates of the last year's agreement, and doing everything basically the same as we have in the past. And a second one for consideration that does have an increase in the fee based on a potential future decision on where we go with EMS in the fire department. So my recommendation would be to continue with the, the current agreement that we are using with updated dates. This agreement is written for one year, as it was last year. If you do pass or agree to this agreement, it still needs to go to the county commissioners for acceptance on their side and follow through. If you have any other questions, I can certainly answer those for you.
Councilors, any questions? Council Captain.
On the first one, where you kept in emergency medical response, would it be possible to change that based on your licensing? Because emergency medical response could be anything from advanced life support, EMT, paramedic, whereas your folks are just basic, basic EMTs. So if you could put basic level.
Are you referring to Article 4?
Yes.
So that does read emergency response services, which is not by definition EMS response. Are we doing it? Yes. We're doing it the same way we are in the city of Ellsworth at the current, based on our license. Our license described Fletcher's Landing Township, that is a coverage area, and it was specifically written that way to basically avoid the EMS response.
My copy says medical response.
What's that?
My copy says medical response.
Are you looking at?
Article 4, page 2 of 3.
Yep.
Ellsworth shall provide Hancock County Fire Protection and Emergency Medical Response, non-transport.
Okay, so you're looking at the second version. The first version says emergency response services. So the one that you're looking at where it says emergency medical response is the, the second version, if we choose to continue to do that, which also has an increased fee for such services.
Okay, so we'll go with the second version, not the first version.
I'm recommending the first one right at the moment. And based on the conversation that we'll have on Thursday and subsequent meetings with the council to determine what the future holds for us, then you may come back and revisit the EMS side of it. I wanted to provide that one so that you saw that there was a distinct difference in the word wording and also the fee.
Other questions, comments? Council Phillips.
Interesting scenario it presents, so if we approve it the way it's presented it wants to, then it's probably a moot point to waste our time Thursday night because we've committed to an EMS service. We approved the second version, I would assume we could add the EMS article at a later date after the council makes the decision on how we want to go into the EMS.
Chief Tepa. That's exactly opposite, John. First one is providing fire response, yet because we did add Fletcher's Landing on there as part of the license as a response area, we have been doing the same EMS response we have in Ellsworth. If you choose to not do that anymore and rescind the license for EMS, you, you remain with, with simply doing fire coverage, because that is not saying that you're providing emergency medical response.
First article has a separate thing pulled out and shows us a devil runout, correct?
I'm sorry, I didn't hear you.
The first, first agreement I'm reading says $17,500.
No, that's the second one.
What's the first one?
I think they're backwards.
Maybe in reverse order, but that's, that's the one.
Is that what you're saying? Is that what you're saying?
Yes.
Yeah, so the first article in there says that. You can argue with me all you want, but the bottom line is, if we approve it that way, we're committing to EMS. Well, we haven't had that meeting and discussed it. We may, we may not.
That's not the one I'm asking you to approve. It's in reverse order with what you're seeing, I guess.
Okay, so what, how it get laid in here?
Yeah.
Okay.
The one that's for $15,000 is what I'm asking you to approve.
Cool. I like that approach. And maybe we can do, we can add the later on button?
Absolutely.
Perfect. It's the way it got posted. I apologize, but it's the way it came to us, Richard.
I'm glad you asked the question. So you're on the same page.
I suppose you weren't lucky enough to get the 143 page packet.
Yeah.
So, deal.
Other questions, comments? Is there a motion?
Mr. Chairman. Chairman. Move approval of the request of the Fire Chief to accept a revised agreement with the city of Ellsworth and the County of Hancock for providing Fletcher's Landing fire protection.
Second.
You have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor? It's unanimous. Thank you, Chief Teppe. Item 14, Council Order Number 072004, request of the Development Services Director to approve a business and residence contract for services at the Union River Center for Innovation.
The, oh, I, Jenna will be calling in in just a second. Yes. Hello, Jenna?
Hello.
Ah, there we go.
Are you ready for me?
We are ready, Jenna.
Okay, sorry about that.
That's fine.
Okay, so this one is for the business and residence slash entrepreneur on-site contract. Council may remember over a year ago now, back in June 2019, the council approved $125,000 grant from the Maine Technology Institute that was granted to support the Union River Center for Innovation. One of the specific items in that three-year grant agreement includes the funding of the business and residence or the entrepreneur on-site position at IRKI. In July of last year, the council approved a one-year contract with Ms. Kathy Taylor as the business and residence entrepreneur on-site. She is the founder of one of the companies that is currently located at the Union River Center for Innovation. In the past year, Ms. Taylor has continued to establish her relationship with the businesses and entrepreneurs at IRKI and with city staff. She mentors entrepreneurs and also provides administrative oversight of the centers. I've provided the council with the draft contract with Ms. Taylor. This is a renewal. It has not changed from last year. As I stated, the contract is to be paid for with the Maine Technology Institute grant fund. And I would just ask the council to authorize the city manager to renew and approve that contract, and I'm happy to take any questions on the contract.
Any questions? I don't see any questions, Jenna.
Oh, right.
Is there a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I move to authorize the city managers to renew and approve a business and residence contract for services at the Union River Center for Innovation. This contract will be funded from the Maine Technology Institute grant approved by council on June 17, 2019.
You have a motion?
Second.
You have a second? Any further discussion? All those in favor? It's unanimous. Item number 15, Council Order Number 072005, request of the Development Services Director to approve a services agreement with Pulse Marketing at the Union River Center for Innovation.
So the grant, the three-year $125,000 grant that we got in 2019, under that grant, the second specific item included, is to fund professional marketing services. Again, in July of last year, the council approved a one-year contract with Pulse Marketing to provide these services. In that year, Pulse delivered many improvements to the center's marketing plan, including a revamped website, management of our social media accounts, and the coordination of business coaching services and public workshops. Again, I provided the council with the draft proposal from Pulse Marketing. It's a renewal, and it has slightly changed from last year in that the overall cost is actually down by approximately $2,000. Some of the services that they provided us in the first year have already been completed, and that's why there's a reduction in cost. Again, the contract is to be paid for with MGI grant funds. Overall, the services provided by Pulse have been positive, and I would respectfully request that the council please consider authorizing the city manager to approve and renew a one-year contract with Pulse Marketing for professional marketing services, IRKI, in the amount of $18,480. And again, I'm happy to take any questions on that contract.
Any questions? No questions. Is there a motion?
Mr. Chairman, move to authorize the city manager to approve a services agreement with Pulse Marketing at the Union River Center for Innovation for $18,480. This agreement will be funded from Maine Technology Institute grant approved by the council on June 17, 2019. Second.
You have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor? Unanimous. Item 16, Council Order Number 072006, request of the Development Services Director to accept the Keep Maine Healthy grant in the amount of $25,372. And before you start, Jenna, I just want to read a comment question that came in from John Stein, which I think you are going to address most of this, but it says, "To the council regarding agenda item 16, would the council describe how it came to the full amount of the request? What are the main items supported by that budget? And what are other similarly sized towns requesting and being awarded for this grant?" Thank you again. All your say.
Do you want me to address that question first, or should I go through the description of the grant and what we applied for, and then get to that question after Dale?
Yeah, that makes sense. Yep, you can do it that way, that's fine.
Okay. So the city applied for and was awarded funds from the State Department of Health and Human Services, Keep Maine Healthy 2020 Municipal COVID-19 Awareness Campaign, in the amount of $25,372. Activities to be funded through this grant include those that promote physical distancing and public health, which for us includes the purchase of more PPE, including hand sanitizers and masks for the public and for city staff to utilize. It also includes cleaning of the Harbor Park restrooms and playground equipment at Milton Park, and an upgrade to no-touch toilets and sinks of the Milton Park restrooms. Activities to be funded through the grant also include public education activities. We have assembled a working group, I believe David had talked about that during the introduction, to develop an informational rack card to be printed and then deferred by the city, the chamber, and local businesses. The working group is also developing and working to implement an educational campaign to promote safety and stability amongst residents, business owners, employees, and visitors, and guests. So far, the working group has developed a radio media campaign that is ready to be implemented, and if council approves the acceptance of these funds, can be implemented very quickly. The plan is that the funds that were procured through this grant could be matched with some of the money that the council reallocated back in April to be put toward COVID economic relief. Combining those funds with the funds we have been awarded through this grant will allow us to have a dynamic radio campaign that can be then expanded upon into print media and social media. I would therefore ask the council to authorize the city manager to accept the funds from the BHHS, Keep Maine Healthy 2020 Municipal COVID-19 Awareness Campaign, in the amount of $25,372. And I'm happy to comment on John's questions, as well as the council's questions.
Sure, if you want to answer John's questions.
Sure. So in terms of the amount, how did, or I guess in terms of the activities, how did we come up with those? We worked with city staff, department heads and managers to develop a list. We talked to the Fire Chief. We talked to our facilities manager. They all, all of the management team saw the application for this grant. They each sent me, being the point person who was going to write the grant, basically what their needs are for what this grant could cover. So I compiled a list of the different types of items that were suggested. We have reached out to the chamber to represent the businesses, all businesses in Ellsworth, to also understand what sort of educational campaign and informational campaign could be helpful. And we were provided with a list. I asked each person to provide me with a budget from quotes from either vendors or from either local media sources or, you know, the materials and supply costs. Put that all together, and that's how we came up with the budget. I would say that we are, the asks throughout the state were, they ranged tremendously. Some of the larger cities obviously had asks up in the hundreds of thousands of dollars, while similar communities to us that don't get huge tourist surges. So like Far Harbor obviously gets a very tremendous amount of surge in the summer. We do get it, but it's more food traffic than it is people actually staying here. So like, for example, Rockland asked for about, you know, similar to us, about $30,000. Sells asked, I don't, I believe, asked for a similar amount. But then you have cities such as Bangor, cities such as Portland, and then some of the more seasonal tourist communities asking for higher amounts.
Manager Cole.
Yeah, if I could add to that, there were communities that asked for funding for additional temporary seasonal staff, whether it be code enforcement officers or such, or health officers. That was really designed towards communities as, as Director Richard says, have a surge, commonly such as beach, they're called beach ambassadors down on the southern Maine coast, or where you have a large bar scene like on the old port in Portland. That was not our issue. Our issue was more around informational campaigns and PPE and other safety measures. Our, our police chief and code officer are handling the issues as they come in. So I just wanted to make that distinction. I believe Bar Harbor, Jenna, got twice as much as we did, maybe in the $50,000 range and something, but, but of course, they're dealing a lot more with crowd control than we are seasonal crowd control.
Questions? Council Miller.
Jenna, who's part of the working group?
The working group that we've assembled has, from the city, is Dale, myself, and David. We have Gretchen from the Chamber of Commerce. We have two business owners. We have a representative from Northridge Light. And we have someone in our community who is a communications specialist, whose office is actually in Ellsworth, and he's been helping us tremendously as well.
Thank you.
Council Captain.
Looking at the budget or the expense summary, it says that on actual material supplies, out of the $25,000 budget, $5,452 was spent on materials, and the rest is all towards consultants or direct service. Who are these consultants?
Yeah, so unfortunately, the state budget system doesn't play nice with what we asked for, so we had to fit things into their budget form. But the consultants include the people that we have the cleaning contract with, I believe it's ServiceMaster, that we already have the cleaning contract with for the bathrooms at Milton Park. So it's expanding upon their services to also go to Harbor Park as well as to the playground equipment. And then the rack cards are going to be printed by a local printer, and so unfortunately, we have to call them a consultant. And then the, the media sources that we put in for local media sources, such as our local radio station and newspaper advertising, and those are also kind of grouped together as consultants. So they're not technically consultants, but they're other people that we would be paying for to help us with the, promote the educational campaign, as well as those who we have to contract with.
Other questions, comments?
I would just like, again, say what I said earlier. I really want to commend the city staff. The list could go on, and there's certainly, you know, hindsight, looking back and saying, well, what else could we utilize? That's always the case, that this was a short turnaround. But I, the staff have really done a nice job of being open and listening and trying to respond to needs as they come up, and that will be the path going forward. We know COVID is not going away tomorrow, so as needs come up, we've encouraged in all of those conversations for businesses to reach out to the city so the city can be a resource to help support individuals. One of the dynamics with the way the executive orders exist and the reality is that it's based on sectors. So the rules and what that means for different sectors, that doesn't necessarily mean that our code enforcement staff know exactly the ins and outs of every sector as it relates to COVID precautions and setting up a business to address COVID. So from that perspective, the, the experts really lie in the industry and trying to tap into that expertise if a business has a question about how they might respond to some of that. So it's really trying to create that collaborative environment where it's supportive to address and respond to the situation appropriately, and I think the city staff have really done a nice job with that. And Jenna, you've really led that effort, and just want to thank you publicly.
Thank you. If I may, Dale, just, I just want to take this time to say that if the council does approve these funds, that the, we put in for more hand sanitizer for businesses. So if you're listening, this is available to you, and you can reach out to me, and we will get that to you, as well as extra boxes of masks if you're in need. I know these are costs that are going to just keep continuing to pile up, and so we want to be there to help you with those things. And then you brought up the collaborative effort. I'm, I'm pretty excited about the working group that we have put together because really great ideas keep coming out of that group. And just this past Friday, we started talking about trying to assemble a peer-to-peer group so that those people who are within the same business, so restaurant owners who are doing something can speak to other restaurant owners who, you know, have questions or don't understand the CDC guidelines or want to know creative techniques. So I think that I'm excited to have this working group to work with, and also for the ideas that are flowing out. So even though, you know, these items I just spoke to are, seem somewhat limited, I think that there's definitely a chance to expand upon these, and we'll keep coming up with ideas to try to assist the community.
Any further questions, comments? Is there a motion?
Mr. Chairman, authorize the city manager to accept $25,372 grant from the state and Maine Department of Health and Human Services, Keep Maine Healthy 2020 Municipal COVID Awareness Campaign, to fund physical education and physical distancing, public health support activities.
You have a motion?
I'd just like to clarify, it's public education, not physical education?
I wanted physical education. I like that better.
Are you willing to accept that friendly?
Pick things up and put them back down.
So a motion?
Second. Second.
We have second. Any further discussion? All in favor? Unanimous. Jana seems to be keeping us busy this evening. Item number 17, council order number 072007, request of the Development Services Director to accept the Maine Technology Institute grant for IRKI, which is the Union River Center for Innovation, in the amount of $72,000. Jana.
All right. The city applied for and was awarded $72,000 grant from the Maine Technology Institute to upgrade and expand upon the community laboratory that is housed at IRKI. The plan for IRKI from its development phase was to target entrepreneurs and startup companies that focus on the life science sector. So an upgraded laboratory with enhanced research and development capabilities will aid in attracting these life science companies to the center as well as grow those companies in the life science and biotech field who currently reside at the center and allow them to graduate. The city's portion of amounts for this grant is from funds that have already been budgeted from the fiscal year 2020 revenues to upgrade the electrical at the center. The majority of the remainder of the match comes from a donation of laboratory equipment from a new tenant, Noble Bioscience, at the center. This donation has been formalized through a memorandum of understanding, and we have also been instructed to develop a bill of sale for the donation, which we are currently in the process of doing. I would respectfully ask that the council consider authorizing the city manager to accept a grant from the Maine Technology Institute in the amount of $72,000, and I am happy to take any questions on this item too.
Councillors, any questions? Seeing none.
Mr. Chairman, move to authorize the city manager to accept the $72,000 grant from the Maine Technology Institute to upgrade and expand upon the community laboratory at the Union River Center for Innovation.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor? Unanimous. So, Jana, I think that's all of your items.
I keep you busy, but, you know, I might have a baby between now and the next week.
That's right.
So, yeah, gotta get it all in at once. So thank you, I appreciate it.
All right, thank you.
Take care, bye-bye.
Dale.
Thank you.
All right, item number 18, public hearing and action on the city of Ellsworth municipal budget resolutions for FY 2021. Manager Cole, do you want to start?
Sure. Before you have the resolve for the adoption of the FY 21 budget, this, of course, has been a long endeavor like it always is, numerous budget meetings, but it starts with department heads submitting their budgets, school departments, library. I do want to acknowledge the fact that when our department heads first submitted their budgets back in the end of January, it was a different world. And when COVID hit in March, we sent the budgets back and said, you know, we've got to scrub harder. And they did, and I want to acknowledge the hard work of our department head stood up to the challenge. The budget as presented would lower the mil rate from, from, excuse me, 1881 as of 2020 to 1877 as of the new budget. So this is a reflection, again, of numerous budget meetings and hard work on all ends. I think it's a, I think it's a good budget and reflects all that hard work. There is a resolve in front of, in front of you as part of the package that would need to be adopted if you choose to move forward with this budget, and certainly it's open now for your discussion and action on the public hearing.
So I would like to make sure that all councillors are aware of one change from the last time in all of our discussions about the budget, putting it together piece by piece and building the final product. The last discussion we had with the library trustees till this evening, there was a plan in place for them to go back and look at their budget to see if they could align the, the budget line items to find that $30,000 without having to cut into the, the staffing. And in subsequent discussions with them, they felt like that was not going to be realistic based on where they've actually ended. So what's in the budget is rather than have that alignment take place, the recommendation in the budget at this time is to take, add another $30,000 from that existing fund balance to bring that total from 70,000 to the full $100,000, which means that we will continue to achieve the, the goals. The 100,000 will be taken out of those existing funds, moved over, and then we'll move forward. So I want to make sure that that's on the table and for any discussion and review as we move forward.
So what is the accurate amount that the council is giving to the library?
So the budget will, it will reflect the same amount in the allocation. Find it here. Oh, it's Manager Cole, if he has that. Manager Cole, do you have the library budget in front of you? Councilmore was asking what the, what the taxpayer allocation is. It, it doesn't change. It will be exactly the same as we had proposed.
Page two, library 672, comma 372.
Right, that's the gross amount.
That'll be the total.
That would include appropriation, the $100,000 from capital reserve plus whatever other revenues are generated by fees and other measures, correct?
So that, that's, that's the budget figure?
Yes, this is the total budget. The 672 is the total. The taxpayer burden is...
462, isn't it?
Yeah, it's around 462. I don't know if... It's on the spreadsheet.
It should be on the sheet that you just took from the...
Oh, thank you.
Let's find that so that we can give a specific...
If, would you like for me to make copies of this for the council?
I don't need a copy. You can just read it.
The general fund appropriation is 461, 872.
461, 862?
872.
872. 461, 872.
Yes.
And that is a reduction over last year, is correct?
I'd have to go look and see what the exact...
Yes, that would be the hundred...
The best they're using is what the unexpendated fund balances they had last year.
Right.
Correct, correct.
So that number you just proposed, if we were to remove the, the $30,000, would come out? Okay.
So the, the taxpayer burden going into this next fiscal year is reduced by $100,000 over last year as a result of moving forward $100,000 of the fund balance. So that, that moves that line down.
Could you tell me that again? I just want to make sure I get this right.
Sure, so last year, well, let me start with, at the beginning of the budget cycle, all departments were asked, given the situation that we're all experiencing, to really look at their budget, go back to their budget and make sure that they're only requesting costs that they absolutely needed. And in that, the course of that, the library came back with a budget of approximately, I think it was 34,000?
It was in that range.
31,000 reduced from last year. So that's where we started. So the, the total budget from last year, when we received the first budget from the library, it was reduced by that $31,000. And then through our process, we had talked about reducing the taxpayer burden share by $100,000. So the plan that we've submitted will in fact reduce that taxpayer burden by $100,000, an additional $100,000. And the reason that's achieved is that we're moving forward $100,000 from the fund balance to cover that. Yes? So comments?
So as far as that, as far as the library is concerned, then they'll have approximately the same amount of money that they had last year to survive with. But in doing this, I see we've, we've set the bar at a lower amount for next year. Gives them a year to make preparations, either to find more money from subscribers or any other methodology that they see fit, or to decide what the face of the library looks like the year after. So how to, how to adjust their spending or what they want to be to the public.
And I would also reiterate, one of the agreements we had was that, that we will pull together a committee that will have council representation, trustee representation, and supporters of the library representation to start a process to look at strategies to effectively address what, what everybody has agreed in terms of the supporters, the trustees, certainly the comments we all received, is that the surrounding communities, the hope is that they will also contribute more. So by working over the next year, that was certainly the request that we heard a lot of, is to give that time for that to happen. And we all agreed in our meeting to form that kind of working group to move this issue forward together collaboratively, and hopefully with the, the end result will be that through that process, that $100,000 will be realized in additional revenue, and that's, that's going to be the goal. So that was, that's where, where the, the focus has been, and, and I think it's a process that going forward will achieve some, some positive outcomes with, with that kind of collaboration.
Thank you for these handouts. That helps to explain.
So I'll give everybody a moment to, to be able to look those over since you're just receiving them. And I'm checking for comments. I have no comments at this time. While, while you're looking that over, I would just want to make a, a quick comment to, obviously, that the budget process was very different. We started with a capital planning committee that was really, that started last year to, with outside individuals. And again, I want to thank Jack Frost, Robin Clark and Steve Salisbury for participating in that. Certainly apologize for the fact that it ended abruptly when we had to change course and, and have a different kind of discussion, but I appreciate their willingness to come to the table and participate in that process. And I think it's a, it's a good process and hopefully we'll get back to more of a normalcy going forward, and, and that committee lends some, you know, real guidance and direction around that. So other questions about the budget, library or others? Councilor Miller?
Not the library.
You can, whatever.
Well, I promised a lot of people that messaged me, including the ex-police chief, to revisit the cars. That they don't really need, the only really car that needs to go home is the K-9 Cruiser. And also, they don't need to idle out in front because the equipment is fine in the heat and cold and everything like that. So he wants to know why we're still sending cars home with everybody except the K-9 Cruiser, and if we could stop the idling out in front of City Hall. I, I know the police chief is not here, so...
Right. On the idling issue, certainly the chief could address it better than I, but in the cold winter, they need, they have electronic equipment in the car, it has to be maintained.
Yeah, he said it's, it's rated for that, shouldn't be a problem. I don't know if I misheard this enough, but it seems to be that the comment that you just mentioned also said that during this time period, in the summer, they've run because the electronics and so forth sometimes take a while to boot up. Did I hear that correctly? Or is the person you talked to saying that they don't need to do that? Well, he did, he just said it was rated for hot and cold, and that it really shouldn't be a problem to shut the car off. I'm not sure about the booting up.
Quite true, during our budget discussions, this was brought up and the chief explained it, and at this point, I can't remember what he said. But I also believe that, I don't think that the, our waste will be on means, and I'm sure that there's a, got to be somewhat of a, a somewhat valid reason for them to do it. And he did explain it during his presentation.
Well, I thought the explanation was that it was just, if the car would get too hot or the car would get too cold. But he says that's not a valid explanation. I was, I was thinking that it was, that it went beyond that, though. I think...
Chief Mosher is on the line. Hello, Chief?
Well, I thought the explanation was that if the car would get too hot or the car would get too cold.
Glenn, I think you have to take off the feed. Would you like to get, me to get Chief on the line?
Sure.
I think that was the delay factor.
Hello?
Hello, Chief Mosher?
Yes.
Bring you out to the front here.
Hello?
I think you have a delay, Glenn, because we can hear something in the background.
Caller, if you could turn your radio down.
Yes.
Okay, there we go. That's good.
Can you hear me, David?
Yes. So I have you on speakerphone, obviously. Just wanted to make sure you do that. Yeah, the question is about the idling of cars and leaving the cars running and as to why, because the cars are heat and weather tested, that's the right term. You heard, you heard the, you heard the comment, correct?
I did, from the councillor, yeah.
Okay.
And I, I guess I would raise the question that if, if the former chief has concern with it, why was it a policy when he was the chief that the vehicles idled? But regardless of that, the fact is with the computer equipment and the camera equipment, all throw an excessive amount of heat. And if you have a vehicle in 90-degree weather, running with all of that equipment inside of it, plus the radiated heat from the sun, that vehicle, inside that vehicle is going to get to an excess where the equipment will be damaged. And in the wintertime, conversely, the vehicles are run, one, to keep heat on as a heat source for the vehicles in, in, for the equipment inside, and also because you have a vehicle that's going to be, in a moment's notice, maybe needed to be driven at high rates of speed in, in order, in order to respond to an emergency. And if you do that on a cold motor, you're likely to cause damage to the motor. So those are just some of the reasons why we idle the vehicles. And like I've said in the past, I'm happy to speak to my officers about shutting the vehicles off during normal temperatures where there's not extremes, but it's really, you know, the one or two vehicles that's idling for a couple of hours, I don't really think that that's, causes a whole lot of fuel consumption... And the prior, the chief before him had negotiated that or worked that into his planned contract. And the vehicles, so there's only two vehicles that are, go home outside of the K-9, that's myself and the captain. And the reason, the main reason for that is when we're needed to respond back to the city for emergency situations, which has happened a number of times since I've been chief, we need vehicles that are equipped with emergency lights and sirens so that we can respond in a timely and safe fashion. In addition, they also have the radio equipment, and the vehicles are used by the captain and myself in many different situations on duty, whether it be for me to attend meetings all over the state, or for me to just go across town to a meeting. And the captain alike to attend meetings and oftentimes respond to calls throughout the course of the day. And so the vehicles serve a whole host of reasons, other, outside of the fact that, yes, at the end of the day, those two vehicles do go home with the captain and myself in the event that we do need to respond back in an emergency fashion. Beyond that, the vehicles are also occasionally used, they have been used, utilized when we've had officers who have been at the Main Criminal Justice Academy. And we sent the vehicles down to the academy so as to not take away one of our frontline vehicles, cruisers, that are needed for patrol.
If I might, Chief Mosher, I would just make the statement that the chief is a 24/7 public safety figure. He's out there. But beyond that, Glenn has done a very good job of keeping me informed as emergencies are... I've seen him go out at night for accidents in the middle of the night. On weekends, so-called days off, he's in here dealing with, you know, dealing with, most recently, the protests and all. So he needs his vehicle, he needs his equipment, and needs to be able to respond.
I would, yes, thank you, David. I would echo that and say that those vehicles, the vehicles that we have, and I'd be happy to show any one of the council members or any concerned citizen, for that matter, the vehicle, it's full with equipment, it's utilized. I have all of my emergency equipment that I need between firearms and vests and so forth, so that I can respond at any time, from my home or from my office, to any call as needed, and have done so many, many times in the course of my tenure as chief. I do not consider myself off-duty. The men and I leave the building, and so I take complete responsibility for everything and every one of my officers in that city. So anytime anything happens, it's a standing that they are to notify me, and I respond frequently, whether it be fatal car accidents in the middle of the night, after-hour protests, or after-hour other types of events, weekend parades, weekend events. Very few of those will go off without you seeing me there. And so as, as part of that, that vehicle is somewhat of a incentive to me or, and part of my, you know, part of my reimbursement, if you will, for the much more than 40 hours of time that I dedicate on a weekly basis to the city of Ellsworth and to doing my job.
And I would add that it's common, fairly common practice to provide the chief with a vehicle.
I'm in total agreement with that.
Yes, absolutely. And I, the vehicle is not used for me, by me, for personal use outside of to and from, responding to and from the city of Ellsworth. I do not, it's, in fact, we have policy against using the vehicles for personal use. Occasionally, maybe on my way home, I might stop at the store or something, once I leave work to go home to pick up something for dinner or something. But outside of that, the vehicle is only used for work-related activities exclusively. And I will also add that the vehicles that myself and the captain drive are high mileage, they're the highest mileage in our fleet. We take the vehicles that come out of the frontline vehicles rotation and extend another year on them, get another year use or two, if need be, usage out of those vehicles before those vehicles are used for trade-ins. So it's not like the city has gone out and purchased a new vehicle for me or for anyone else in the department to drive outside of the frontline vehicles. All we're doing is extending the life of those vehicles by putting them into a position where they're no longer a frontline vehicle used every single day, putting, you know, 100-plus miles on them a day. Myself and the captain each probably put anywhere between 10,000 and 12,000 miles on the cruisers over the course of the year, traveling back and forth to work and using them in the course of our duty for, again, responding to complaints or the meetings outside of town or just heading, going across town to a meeting.
Chief Mosher, thank you for taking the time to call in. I think one of the things that's helpful is, obviously, we get a lot of different kind of feedback, and it's good for the public to be able to hear exactly what is going on when there's a question like that. So I'm glad you took the time to call in and share that information, because it is important and I think helpful when people hear the context as you just shared.
Yes. Thank you, chief, for calling in and addressing those concerns.
Well, I, I thank, you know, I thank you for the opportunity. Had I anticipated there was going to be any questions or concerns, I certainly would have been at the meeting to be able to speak to it in person. But I'm happy to answer any other questions regarding the vehicle purchases or anything else dealing with my budget.
No, I think you put it very well.
I think we're all set. Thank you.
Okay.
Have a good night.
Thanks.
Other budget questions, comments? Council cap?
The legislative still includes, it's still at 17,000 rather than 15,000. On the updated one?
Oh, I know. Which section, though?
In the city final resolution, the first item, 0100, is still at 17,000 rather than 15,000.
Oh, yes. I think it has to be appropriated for you to then donate it, if that makes sense. You've indicated the desire to donate. So it has to be appropriated first, if, I'm trying to contribute it.
But we will figure that out.
Okay.
Ideas, motions?
Public hearing.
Oh, it is a public hearing. Yes, thank you.
Sure is.
Absolutely is. So let me open the public hearing. So I'm opening the public hearing on the budget for FY 2021. If anybody from the public would like to comment, you may send in your email to dhamilton@elswerman.gov. And as we wait for any other additional comments, we can make, continue discussing. time for people to comment. I will continue to look around the room.
Mr. Chairman. I move that we approve the FY 21 budget as presented this evening. Second?
A motion and second. Any further discussion? All those in favor? Item 19, council order number 072008, request of the city manager to approve a contract for lawn treatment services at City Hall, Merrill Park, SK Whiting Park, Harbor Park, Triangle at De Meyer, Wilson Field, and De Meyer Fields, 1 through 3.
Public Works Director, Seckelich, is calling in now or any moment, and will present this. This is a extension of an existing contract for services that I believe she is proposing. There we go. Did my steps tonight? You are on board.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. Good evening, all. I'm here tonight to ask for you guys to renew the lawn and treatment services contract for our various city properties, including, but not limited to, City Hall, De Meyer Fields, SK Whiting Park, and the Harbor Park. This is a service, you'll see in your attachments that I attached the previous contract and memo from last year that Deputy City Manager Moat used to do. I've taken it over since she is no longer with us. But essentially, the cost per location remains the same as it was last year, but we are additionally asking to add, to renew the contract, as well as add services independently at Nolton Park. And these are just the fertilizer, aeration, and lime and those type services that we cannot do as the highway department is doing the mowing, but we still need another company to do the actual treatments. So that is where I'm at right now.
Questions? Council cap?
So the line item services for the other items include grub control, pest control, and weed control. And since this is a park, I just want to make sure that's non-toxic for the kids.
I'm sorry, I can barely hear you guys.
So the other services that this company is providing include the fertilizer, weed control, aeration, overseeding, lime application, and grub control. And I just want to make sure that since this is a park, that the stuff that they're using where kids might be playing is non-toxic.
Correct. So years ago, citizens had concerns, and that is why we went with a natural lawn care service, which is what these people are, so that it is safer for the environment as well as children, well, and people, dogs, whoever uses the park.
Dogs or people, too?
Yep. And the services are, that are done, it's the fertilizer or the natural fertilizer, it's done three times, three times a year or three times a contract. And then the other services are just done once.
Perfect. Thank you.
Any other questions? Seeing none?
Okay. Mr. Chairman, council order 072008, move to approve the request of the city manager to approve a contract for lawn treatment services at City Hall, Merrill Park, SK Whiting Park, Harbor Park, Triangle at De Meyer, Wilson Field, and De Meyer Fields as presented.
A motion?
Second.
You have a second? Any further discussion? All in favor? Unanimous.
Thank you.
Thank you. Item 20, council order number 072009, request of the city manager to approve a contract for Nolden Park mowing and grounds maintenance services.
Move to approve?
Is it a request to remove it?
Yes. We're going to seek out more quotes.
Okay. So is that a motion somebody wants to make?
Need a motion?
Yes.
Motion removed, council order. Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor? Item is removed. Item 21, adjournment?
So move. Second.
Motion second. All in favor? Unanimous. Thank you.